Excuse me, Jackie, but we can't hear you in online.
Pardon me, Jackie, I still can't hear you. I don't believe anybody can hear you online.
Alrighty, is this better?
That works. Thank you so much.
Okay, you're quite welcome. I do want to introduce my distinguished guests this evening. In the event that you do not know who is sitting here in the front. I'd like to start with Senator Dan Zwanitzer, who is the co-chair of the Corporations Elections and Political Subdivision Committee, as well as Senator Chris Rothfuss, Representative Carly Provenza, Representative Trey Sherwood, Representative Kathy Connolly, and we also have Representative Blackburn, who serves on the Corporations Elections and Political Subdivision Committee from Laramie County, who came over to be with us this evening. Members from my staff include my chief deputy, Kayla White, my elections clerk, Amanda Rodriguez, and my elections clerk, Stacy Harvey. I also wanted to mention that Representative Ocean Andrew is not available tonight because of a delayed flight. And so he extended his hopes of a successful work session, and certainly will follow up. On the Zoom this evening, we have Michael Swank, who is the Senior Fiscal Analyst from the Wyoming Legislative Service Office. I also have members of Laramie City Council here with us this evening. And of course, you, the audience, and those participants on Zoom. Welcome and thank you. I'd like to begin to also thank Adam Wales, the IT Director for Albany County, and Riley Shogren, who's in the back of the room, who assisted in setting up so that we had Zoom capabilities this evening. We also had assistance from the County Assessors Office, as well as the Planning Office, to provide maps that are displayed here. Basically, what's displayed are areas of growth within the various sectors of Albany County for you to look at. I would like to begin this evening if we could have Senator, or pardon me, Senator Zwanitzer, who wasn't making or did not know that he was going to be part of the agenda, but was very willing, I believe, to offer just some general information about the process of redistricting and the role for our legislators, as well as the community, who all have an interest in this process and play an integral part of the process.
How about now? Well, thank you, Clerk Gonzalez. I was not planning on speaking, but as the co-chairman of the Committee for Corporations, who's in charge of redistricting this year, the quick summation is once a decade after the federal census sends us the numbers. Our constitution requires Wyoming to district ourselves into a plan where there is at least two representatives for every one senator. We are required by our state constitution to follow the census numbers. So there have been some concerns if the census numbers are correct or fair, et cetera. Our constitution mandates us to follow them, regardless of the thoughts that some counties are expressing that they don't believe they may be correct. With that in mind, we've had two initial meetings. We have started on what we call a regional plan, where each region has been asked to have public hearings and discuss what might work for their region. Albany County was lucky enough right now to be their own region under the plan. So, under the, what, the 60 House, 30 Senate deviation, which we've had in place now for two decades, Albany County is entitled or given enough population to qualify for four House seats and two Senate seats. So currently, you don't have many of the concerns that other counties or regions are facing on where to pull other population from or where to have to lose residents of the county. Obviously, it's one big jigsaw puzzle. So as we move forward, other counties may be looking to add or subtraction population from your region. And so our next Corporations meeting will be October 6 in Douglas, where each of the regions will come back together and we'll kind of look at initial thoughts from each region, and if they're piecing together well or where we may need to spend more focus. And so that's the high-level view. There are 14 members of the redistricting committee, nine from the House, five from the Senate, fairly strongly geographically based, although no one specifically from Albany County. But your friends over in Laramie County have your back, because there are three of us on the Committee Two House and One Senate. So that's, the plan is we're going to have multiple public meetings around the state. We're hoping to have a preliminary plan in place by around December 1, which we would present to the legislature and the county clerks to give each county clerk time to ensure that we don't have split precincts and the lines can line up with other election boundaries to ensure we don't have too small of precincts, so we know how people vote, et cetera. So happy to answer any questions tonight on the process. That's pretty much a high-level process. Your county is currently in a really great spot, because we can district four House members and two senators completely within your county. Currently, I think Rock River is in Carbon County, and it could be made whole this time if everybody else cooperates around the state, which remains to be seen.
Would any of our Albany County delegation like to speak at this time to offer any comments?
Clerk Gonzalez, I wanted to add a couple of thoughts to Representative Zwanitzer, Chairman Zwanitzer's discussion. One, which I don't know if everyone in the public understands, is that this is a standard legislative process in the end. A piece of legislation is produced. It is typically sponsored by the Corporations Committee as the committee that is overseeing the redistricting this year. But it is a piece of legislation, and it goes through a traditional legislative process of originally being sponsored by a committee. It would then be introduced in one of the chambers. Is there a decision?
No.
There's no decision yet, but it could start in the Senate or the House, go through the committee in that chamber, potentially be amended, go to the floor, potentially be amended there, as it was 10 years ago, and go through three readings. Each of those readings has an opportunity for amendment. Then it goes to the other chamber through the same process. So there is a long process ahead. There's a lot of opportunity for change or amendment. I think it's important for the public to understand that. Every step of the way, there is opportunity for public engagement and public comment. So we really want to hear from our community any thoughts about specific communities of interest, specific changes or interests that the community possibly hasn't felt were appropriately reflected or represented in the past, and any issues that might be arising that should influence or inform the process moving forward. As Representatives Zwanitzer noted, we are in a position, which is a strong position relative to a lot of other counties, where we have sufficient population. To clarify, it's a little on the low side. And realistically, I believe, we probably didn't do a great job in the census, partly because of the influence of COVID on our student population. We probably under-reported. That's the reality. We don't have any specific evidence. There's no data that indicates that. But if you kind of look to your gut check, if you've lived in Laramie and Albany County for a while, you'd be surprised to hear we only grew by 600 people over the last decade. That doesn't really check out, but that's where we're at. And as Chairman Zwanitzer noted, we're constitutionally obligated to go with the number we've got. Unless we were to appeal through a long, arduous process, I don't even know how that would affect or influence the legislative process, because I have a feeling the appeal process for the census is a longer process than a legislative one. We probably wouldn't have anything changed before we do the next redistricting. So chances are pretty good. We're just going with the numbers we've got. And it puts us slightly on the low side of population. So where Chairman Zwanitzer was saying that some counties are looking to take or blocks these groups of counties that are the districts that are trying to serve as some barriers for decision-making on the districting, we would be a county that if anything, we would need to take some additional population. The reality is, at least in my perception, from our interest standpoint, having Albany County be a block with its four representatives as it was previously, two senators as it was previously, is probably in our best representational interest to ensure that we're representing the county's interests. But again, there's a lot of conversation ahead on that, and there certainly will be some jockeying to potentially give or shift those boundaries. So I'll stop there. Those were the additional points I wanted to add to Chairman Zwanitzer and see if any of my colleagues have anything to add.
Thanks, Clerk Gonzalez. Oh, thank you. Okay. Let me just add a couple of other things. As both Senator Rothfuss and I were the two members of the delegation who were around for the last redistricting. There are a couple of things that we, as an entire delegation, agreed to, and we hope that we can continue that this time. And that's regardless of party, that we work together as a delegation with the community, and we decide together, you know, after as much input as possible about what would be best for all of us. And so, for example, guiding principles are one person, one vote. All right, there's no two ways about that. We truly believe in that. That we have what are called communities of interest. How do we think about that here? You know, I have some of my own, right? I think we have a unified school district, for example, right? A unified school district means that maybe Rock River really should be part of our population. But more importantly, what we decided, and we got together a week ago, two weeks ago, with Clerk Gonzalez and her staff, is that we want public participation. And in fact, I just asked Chairman Zwanitzer, has any other region had a meeting like this? And the answer was just one. All right, so one out of 10. And we want to have at least two or three, with this first one being informational, right? What, you know, everything that we know that's out there, right? And how for members of the public to get access to that information, not just us? So that was very important to us as well, that we want to hear from you. And so I think I'll leave it at that. I probably will have some comments after Mr. Swank from LSO talks about kind of that public portal and what the lines look like, because honestly, the lines in Albany County will have to be drawn differently. They just will be. But first, I think we need to learn what those look like. So thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Zwanitzer. I have a quick question for you. By the way, for the public, if you get on the legislative website, there's a lot of information on redistricting out there that shows population changes, et cetera. So yeah, you might want to look at that. But my question is for Chairman Zwanitzer. Currently, part of our county, the Rock River area, is assigned to Carbon County for the senator. Since the contiguous counties next to us all lost population, other than Laramie County, and we were the only ones growing, do you see any changes in our county assigning further areas to other districts? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mike, so as the chairman of the committee, right? I get phone calls all day long, emails, thoughts, suggestions. And it is true, Carbon County to your west currently has the largest legislative district in the continental U.S., right? And they've lost more population. So that district will need to be expanded. 10 years ago, Rawlins decided they wanted to remain, their municipal boundaries wanted to be a legislative district. Before then, for 10 years, Rawlins was split in half. And it seems interesting, when you do redistricting, some cities are fine being cut in half or thirds, like right now Douglas and Torrington, where others say, we want one complete legislative district to represent the city of Jackson, of Torrington. And so that'll be the big discussion point, I think, is Carbon County is looking for more population, and they're not sure where to find it, because Lincoln County wants to go into Sweetwater. And so every day, it's an evolving discussion. I do think an interesting oddity or uniqueness for your county for the last 10 years is you've had two House members, really in your Laramie urban area, and then two House members in the greater, you know, rest of Albany County. And you've made an urban senator and a rural senator, for as much as those terms apply. Most other counties in the state who have that level of population, Laramie, Campbell, Fremont, have gone the other way, where they've paired a rural House district with a city House district and made that a Senate district. So that's probably in the mix of conversations as well. But Carbon County, depending on if Rawlins agrees to be split in two or if Rawlins wants their own kind of greater legislative district, will have impact somewhere, most likely in your county, yes. But every day is an evolving conversation. So you should do what's best for your county at this point. Make a strong plan, argument. And then as the chips fall, your legislators here will best represent your county's ideas on what might be allowed and what your constituents think, you know? Could you give up Rock River or Gem Woods Landing or Centennial? Or do you want to, you know, take that area to make it work? That's why the public meeting for you to be informed of kind of, when push comes to shove, what is your county willing to do and willing not to do?
I wanted to mention that as my team and I work through this process, we feel honored to be able to do so and to make recommendations as to what best represents our community in terms of precincts. We certainly do not want or would like to avoid splits. And by splits, I mean that when a voter goes to the polls and they may be represented by one representative, but someone else in another area within that same precinct is represented by somebody else, that could create confusion, both to the voter and to the poll watchers. And so we want to work to try to eliminate that process. We certainly want to be open and transparent and to be a voice as we work also with our legislators to hear your comments and your concerns. If there are no other questions that we can address at this time, I'd like to introduce Michael Swank from the Legislative Service Office, who is on the Zoom call with us this evening. Michael is going to make a PowerPoint presentation to talk about Albany County itself and the information that's available on the website. Thank you, Michael.
Good evening. Am I, can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. And I welcome all these meetings. I am glad to participate, and I hope everyone is excited to participate. I volunteered for this, so I'm ready and willing. What I was going to do is go through a few slides, just kind of summarizing where the Joint Corporations Committee is at, as well as the basic data for where the current legislative districts lay relative to the 2020 census. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen. And it says I cannot. Okay. So do you see the presentation on your screen? Okay. So the basic status of things is that redistricting process, as the chairman said, we do this once every 10 years. The base criteria that we look at is the one-person-one-vote criteria, which is generally thought of as districts equalling or substantially equal plus or minus 5% of the ideal. So the state's population is currently split into 60 districts, House districts and 30 Senate districts, which nest two House districts together. So the ideal House district is about 9,600 people. So a district is generally acceptable or would be generally accepted if it was plus or minus 5% from that ideal number. So which is roughly 10,000 per district or about 9,100 per district. So somewhere between that is really where the sweet spot is for redistricting on a statewide basis. The constitution requires the legislature to redistrict. We had the 2020 census. We now have the 2021 interim and the census data reporting and the interim committees work. And that will hopefully result in a 2022 budget session bill draft, as Senator Rothfuss explained, to set the districts for the state. Management council assigned this to the Joint Corporations Committee in January. We had the census data delay, so most of the work is now getting started in the last two months. And the Corporations Committee at the last two meetings, one on August 16th and the last one on September 3rd, adopted their redistricting principles. The core of those principles were adopted on the 16th, and then they amended those on the September 3rd with one amendment. So going through those principles, and you've already talked about some of these terms, election districts should be contiguous, compact, and reflect communities of interest. We've already talked about communities of interest and what that might mean at different levels, whether it's a whole county, school districts, cities and towns, that sort of thing. They all kind of run the gamut of what a community of interest can be interpreted by any one individual. Population of election districts should be substantially equal. This is the 10% range or plus or minus 5%. The goal is basically to have districts that are, the largest district is no bigger than 10%, or is not 10%, sorry, is no larger than 10% higher than the smallest district statewide. To the greatest extent possible in establishing election districts, county boundary should be followed, and census block should be followed. The next principle is the plan should avoid diluting voting power of minorities in violation of Voting Rights Act. The House, this is the amendment that they applied on September 3rd. The House shall have 60 seats and the Senate shall have 30 seats. Principle number six, consideration should be given to two contiguous House districts in each Senate seat or Senate district. And this is the nesting principle, where you would have two contiguous House seats placed and made a Senate district. Significant geographical features should be considered in establishing districts. Common features are rivers and lakes and mountain ranges, that sort of thing, as well as roads, city or town boundary lines. Those are kind of some of the geographical and political features that would impact redistricting. Statewide, the state grew by about 13,000 people or about 2.3% from the 2010 census. Nine counties increased population. Albany County was one of those. 14 counties declined in population. So it was fairly uneven. Some counties grew, most of them declined, but the state overall grew. Albany County increased by about 770 residents, about 2.1%. Now, if you look at the individual districts, Now, if you look at the individual districts, some of this has already been discussed. There are four House districts. There's a fifth House district that is primarily Carbon County, well, Carbon and Sweetwater County, that utilizes about two hundred and forty people's or people from the Rock River area. And then two Senate districts, which are nested, and then one Senate district. Senate District eleven utilizes that same Rock River population. Three of the four current House districts are outside that deviation, that plus or minus five percent. So to get within that five percent, three districts would need to adjust population and boundaries to meet those requirements. One of the two Senate districts is out of the deviation. The last two slides, speaking specifically of the House districts. House District thirteen, forty-five, and forty-six are out of the deviation standard. Forty-six is above, where it has too many people, and the other two districts are below. So they have, there are short people to make that deviation. It also explains that House District forty-seven, which utilizes Rock River's population. On the Senate side, Senate District nine is low, and Senate District ten is within the deviation. And then again, Senate District eleven utilizes Rock River. That's kind of the very broad generalization of the current districts and Albany County. I'm happy to take questions.
Mr. Swank, this is Kathy Connolly. Could you explain a little bit about the use of census blocks? And if there's an obligation for us to use that unit as we put together districts and draw lines?
Yes, Representative Connolly. The census blocks are the smallest level of geography for which the census tabulates the population. There are many census blocks that are zero. Census blocks can go up to several hundred. Wyoming in total has about fifty-four thousand census blocks. But while every, every part of geography will eventually be will include any number of census blocks, but that is not required to actually form a district. But we will not break census blocks in half because we will, we would not know how to allocate the population to unknown geography. So you can use voting districts. Census blocks can be aggregated into block groups. Block groups can be aggregated into census tracts. And the census tracts can be aggregated into the county level population, obviously. But I know from a practical perspective, based on comments you've already heard from the county clerk, there has been in the past a desire to align more voting precincts as much as possible so they don't have to be split or reestablished.
And Mr. Swank, do you know how many census blocks are in Albany County?
Um, I can find that real quick. Maybe not as quick as I thought. I know I have it. Okay, census blocks in Albany County. My computer's running a little slow, sorry. About thirty-one hundred blocks. The smallest block or the largest block is sixteen hundred. The average block size is about twelve people per block.
Oh my God, did I hear you correctly that we have one census block with sixteen hundred people in it?
Correct, and it's likely a portion of some, some area of Laramie.
Okay. Okay, and then, Mr. Swank, are you going to talk a little bit about the public portal and how our, our community members can actually look at this information online and honestly play with it?
Yes, Representative Connolly. The committee did vote to purchase the public portal. It's basically the map to G I S system that we utilize in-house, but in a more kind of user-friendly and simpler format for the public to view. It has not been released to the public yet. We've been testing the last two or three days. And I was going to get an update, got a little bit distracted this afternoon. I was going to get an update from our I T staff. But I believe the goal is to have it out this week, by the end of this week. I do know they, a few select Corporations Committee members were asked to test it, and I believe they're still providing feedback to our I T staff. I will have more information probably tomorrow. I know they had to get some feedback yesterday and implement that. So I'm sure today they're trying to finalize a lot of that.
Are there questions from members of the public here this evening? Yes, sir. Yes, you can come here.
Thanks, legislators. Kind of going back to one thing that Representative Zwanniter was talking about with the communities of interest, providing the example of the town of Rawlins considering itself a distinct community of interest in contrast to the rest of Carbon County. This to me seems like a really intuitive way to divide communities of interest. You know, it's even going back historically, you've kind of had town folks and ranch folks. Now you have town folks and rural subdivision folks, but it still seems like a pretty easy way to sort of conceptualize what a community of interest is. And I'm wondering, I can't wrap my mind around what the rationale is behind the alternative to say, for instance, in Cheyenne, where you have like a neighborhood by the mall is grouped into a voting district with like Burns. And what, you know, what is the, I just don't know what the argument is to rationalize that that is a community of interest rather than saying, you know, the town is a community of interest, you know, maybe north side, south side, you know, just these splits where you're just kind of clearly taking a piece of town and saying, well, this is a community of interest similar to this like far-flung rural community.
Well, one thing that comes to mind on that, I'll address, and certainly the chairman's answer as well. When you start playing with the maps and you recognize that you need to get to about ninety-six hundred for a House district, and there really aren't that many cities in the state that have over ninety-six hundred people. So as you need to pick up people at some of the boundaries, particularly if you're trying to honor county lines, you end up doing some strange things that you won't like. It's almost impossible to build, it probably is impossible, to build a map that everyone thinks properly reflects community of interests because that ninety, with a rural population, your rural population density is ten X less than your city population. So you end up doing things like going into Rawlins and splitting it. And we might do that. And, and Rawlins would have a great case in saying, well, you can't do that. There's not enough people in Carbon County if you don't do that. So that's why we have the largest district in the country right now, because we didn't do that last time. So do you have a district where every year we have the poor representatives that represent that district come to our management council and say, I put a hundred thousand miles on my vehicle last year. Thank you. And, and you don't pay my mileage. Once again, thank you. You know, these are challenges. And so anytime somebody comes and says, you know, this is a bad district, we pretty much nod and say, yeah, that's a bad district. But when you, when you create a good district, you end up creating two bad districts around it. And it's amazing how whack-a-mole it is when you, when you start poking and moving populations, you screw somebody up. So that's my take on it, having played with it a couple of, a couple of times. I'll let.
County, and as long before any of our time, that was kind of the decision here that Fifteenth Street West would be considered the city for legislative purposes. And Fifteenth Street East would then grand cutting north and south. And then the whole rest of the county would be rural, which let's face it. As somebody whose district comes right up to Fifteenth Street, the community of interest on the east and west side of Fifteenth Street is exactly the same. But it was decided forty, I don't know, years ago that that made sense for Laramie. We might argue that differently today.
And the other major thing, especially inside a city, and Laramie will have this issue as well with your county clerk, is your city council wards, at least for Cheyenne, or our city council came forward and said, hey, we need, inside the municipal boundaries, we need these equal. And to do that, it makes the rest of the map, because we have a large portion of county that most people think is inside the city limits of Cheyenne, but it's not. And you get split precincts. And so when you go back through a lot of it, eighty percent you can justify. And then sometimes you have the perfect plan and it gets to the legislature. And the other thing I should say is you need a majority of both houses to vote for that plan. And when you have two senators running against one another in the plan, it's in both of their interests to find a way to see how to make it work in a different way. And sometimes that happens, right? That's politics to get the plan approved. And so you throw all that together and you get some weird-looking districts. But we try from the plan that we'll submit for corporations to the legislature to not have anything that would look super obscure. And so we probably will have some legislative districts that have multiple incumbents. When it gets to the floor of the legislature, it's no longer in the committee's control. And things happen, especially in the Senate the last two decades. So candidly, the last redistricting, that's exactly what happened. I think the original model that was presented from the redistricting committee was, you know, thoughtful and consolidated, tried to make small districts that were rational. And then it got to the Senate and it caused some reelection problems. And so it ended up getting redistricted in a way that was probably detrimental, honestly, to the public, but made sure that the right people that wanted to stay in office did stay in office. So it would be great if we could avoid that. With, with our delegation last time, though, as Minority Connolly mentioned, we didn't have that problem. We had very small transitions that were required last time. We got together with Clerk Gonzalez and we figured out we can move a few people from this district across into the next district, and it took care of it. So we really made some pretty trivial changes last time. This time we have to make more substantial changes because we have pretty significant deviation from the prior districts. So I hope that answers the question.
Question and statement, Brian Schuster, City Councilman here in town. You talked about the one district having or group having sixteen thousand. That's going to change over the next ten years quite drastically because a lot of the dorms are moving from the east side of Fifteenth to the west side of Fifteenth. So you're going to have a great big deviation of people there. Also, I was wondering, when did Rock River start to district with Carbon County? And also, one more comment. Yes, we are going to challenge a census because living here for as many years as I have, coming here at a very young age, at ten, we have shown in the census that Laramie dropped by six hundred people. And we cannot challenge that this year. It has to wait so long until information's gone through. But Laramie did not drop by six hundred people.
Thank you, councillor. To, to address those questions, the with regard to the residence halls and the shift to the sixteen hundred-ish, that certainly will occur over the next five years, that the bulk of the residents will transition. More than five years, seven years probably will be the timeline. What that will lead to realistically is that in the next redistricting, ten years from now, that will have to be reestablished and there'll be a change. We have typically used Fifteenth Street as a bright line. I'd honestly expect to use Fifteenth Street as a bright line to continue because people are used to that. But honestly, we, we don't really know. It would be very challenging, though, to to reflect and anticipate that move moving forward during the redistricting so it stays in a cohesive block, although that is possible if you, if you maintain the university block, which doesn't have a population right now, real, I, I think, maybe, no, I don't think so. I don't think there's any population on the university block. But if you maintain continuity between the university block and the residence hall block along Fifteenth Street, then you'd, you'd remedy that. So that is a, certainly a possibility, depending on how the boundaries are drawn. With regard to the Carbon County shift, that was something that was not within our proposal ten years ago. In our proposal ten years ago as a delegation, we included Rock River in our Albany County draft. And prior to that, Rock River was in our Albany County district and was incorporated into our representation. So we included that as our suggestion. And honestly, that was the only change to the draft that our delegation submitted to the legislature because they needed however many hundred more people to build out that Carbon County district since they were removing Rawlins. And they had to come up with population, they reached up into Rock River. So to my knowledge, I don't know how many prior, but it's my understanding that the prior district model incorporated Rock River as part of our county representation. And it was just the last one in twenty-eleven enacted where Rock River was carved out of the county.
Are there other questions from the audience for the legislators this evening? I'd like to turn to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to ask a question? Please raise your hand and we'll have you recognized. Sir, please come up. Yes, please. Sure.
This isn't so much a question as a comment. You want input from the public. I'm a member of the public. My name is Ken Chestick. And I have a comment about, obviously, the District forty-five, which is the largest district in the county or in the country that runs from Rock River to Rock Springs, essentially. And the only community of interest between Rock River and Rock Springs, they both have the same first name. They're both rocks. Other than that, there's really, it's ridiculous to have those two communities in the same district. So I know, I appreciate what Chris said, that ten years ago, this delegation said, keep us together. And I just want to reemphasize and reiterate that we want that again. I want that again. I think it makes sense to have Albany County as its own unit, have Rock River has much more in common with Laramie than does with Rock Springs. So that's my comment, is to try and keep that together as much as possible. If we need to lose some population to make up something somewhere else, the place to me that makes the most sense is to lop off the northern part of Laramie County. Garrett and that area, which is so far from Laramie, it has a lot more in common with Douglas or with some of the other, other counties. So I think that's where we should lose population. If we have to lose anything, take off the top tier of the county and give it somewhere else. That makes more sense to me than, than taking Rock Springs out and throwing it in with Rock, Rock River or Rock. So that's, that's, that's my comment. And thank, thank you for all your hard work and let's try and keep Rock Springs in with, with us. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Please, this is your time to be heard, to offer your ideas and solutions to help us work through this process.
Clerk Gonzalez, this is Michael Swank. Can I add a comment?
Yes, please.
One thing, because we're talking about Rock River, I wanted to clarify one item. Rock River's current population is about two hundred forty people. In establishing In establishing Albany County as a region, it can fit four representatives and two senators. However, it's only about five hundred people away from not having enough population for that count. So if Rock River is removed, you'd have flexibility with about three hundred people to adjust your districts before your districts would be too small. So I just wanted to reference that, just in case.
Yeah, two things on that. Thank you, Michael. One is, if Albany County does anything, the odds are far more likely that we end up bringing population from another county than losing population from Albany County based on our current census data, as well as, I think, discussions out there. And honestly, I'll just reiterate, I said this before. I don't think we want that either, because it's too broad of a community of interest. We have established community of interest. We have a unified school district. There's a lot of good reasons for us to stick with county boundaries since we can. And that actually is a theme that is recognized by the Corporations Committee, although I don't believe it ended up being one of the key check parameters, but they understand the importance of maintaining county boundaries. The second point is, the closer you get, if we were to give up population, the closer you get to the five percent threshold for your overall district, so for the two Senate districts, the more and more challenging it is to draw reasonable lines without it looking like an ugly gerrymander for the smaller districts that are internal. You need flexibility. You need to be able to go up a little bit and down a little bit for those districts, so that you can have bright lines like roads like 15th Street or Grand. So if you get too close to that border, if we stripped off any population, it becomes incredibly challenging to design those districts in a rational way, and it gets very contradictory.
Can I add something? I just want to kind of switch gears just a little bit about what I think will be our challenge moving forward. Do should I keep on going, Kieber?
You should go.
Okay.
I'll just hang up.
You caught my eye over there. And that is, even though, as everyone is talking about, as I think we're called Region Two, as it exists right now, we fit nicely with four and two, especially if we keep Rock River. That being said, know that the lines within the district will need to change significantly. There's no two ways about it. I have, actually, I have the, we're talking about District 47. It wasn't 4510. It's 47 is the largest in the country. In the state, I have the smallest district. House District 13 is literally the smallest geographical district in the state, meaning it's the highest population density. When I go elsewhere, I joke that that's because only two of my borders are the prairie, right? Unlike everyone else. Our, my district in particular, having lost fourteen percent, and we know that's COVID-related, there's no two ways about it, and Bob, I really appreciate that you're going to be bringing this forward, that we know that lines in the city are going to change. It is very likely that District 13 will not look anything like it does right now, and we've got to be prepared for that. You know, I might want to love to keep it exactly the same way. There's no way that's going to happen. So as we go down the line, just know, and the line is going to be just a couple of months, that the districts, especially those in the city, those lines are going to look very differently, I think.
I'd just like to say that I I think that, I don't have any issue with any of it as far as, you know, the concepts and what we're talking about. I do want to keep Albany County whole. I think that's entirely appropriate. Ken forgot about Point of Rocks. He forgot about Point of Rocks. They're in it, too. House District 47. Anyway, we want to keep Rock River in Albany County, and I don't, God help the legislature. I don't know how you guys are going to deal with Carbon County, just because there's a lot of sagebrush and the red desert and all that, but we need to keep Rock River here. And then as far as how the the local districts get, you know, the local population inside Albany County gets sorted out, it doesn't really matter to me personally, as an elected official. I just want to make sure that the that the the districts make sense. And it's going to come down to the granular part, you know, for the local elections officer, which is the clerk, because we just don't want to split census blocks, and, you know, we don't want it to get too wonky, but probably, I'm going to guess, the only thing that this legislature is going to get super worked up about or think about is the the bigger picture, and then they'll probably honor what we do inside our own county. Would you say that that's accurate?
If we all agree, as we did ten years ago, and submit a delegation plan, they're not going to mess with it except for at the margins, if they need to push or pull population like they did last time. And that's something where we'll have to work as well as we can to hold to a unified county. But there's no reason anyone would ever come into the city if we had a unified position as a delegation. That would be an utter shock.
I cannot see who has their hand raised on Zoom, but please proceed.
It's Paul Weaver. Thank you, Karen Clark. I have a question, and thank you all for having this meeting tonight. My question is, how much of this is complicated by the desire to maintain the sixty House districts and the thirty Senate districts, as opposed to taking a different approach with the number of Senate and House districts? I understand there's not a great appetite for that, but I'd like you all to touch on that and just possibly answer that question of how how much that commitment to those numbers complicates this issue. Thank you.
So the very brutal, honest answer is it massively affects many parts of the state. And you and Fremont are the two beneficiaries, quite honestly, of a sixty-thirty plan. If they're lesser or more, you don't have that nice four-house, two-senate fit. Other counties are struggling mightily, trying to figure out how many legislators should be in their county, and where to pull other populations from. And so we did talk about other plans. I brought a fifty-two House, twenty-six Senate plan, which I still think fits perfectly, but then you basically need, what, twelve legislators to vote against their own interests, which isn't likely to happen. So there are a couple other plans out there, a fifty-six House, twenty-eight Senate, which still fits pretty well. It puts Laramie, Albany, and Carbon in a region. And then there's a sixty-two, thirty-one plan, which would allow the Bighorn Basin. So those of you familiar with Wyoming geography, our really biggest pinch point is the Bighorn Basin. They don't have enough to qualify for six legislators right now, but too many to only give them five. With their geography, there's very few ways to draw that, except south into Fremont, which is the other county that perfectly qualifies for four-house and two-senate currently. So with the change in the number of districts, there's winners and losers, right? The problem moving up is the capacity of the Capitol. We can only fit about sixty desks in the House chambers, any of us can tell you. Maybe sixty-two if we tried really hard. So that's kind of our cap, unless we buy new desks that aren't marble, and but it does have an impact. I do think the sixty-thirty is the first round of where we're starting, what that looks like to your county. I don't think you're going to lose any parts of Albany County, but you might want to start thinking if Medicine Bow and Hannah look a little better, or Saratoga encampment, because Carbon and Sweetwater have some issues where they're going to have to move population around. So the sixty-thirty plan works great for Albany County. If anything, it's going to force you to move into Carbon County somewhere to take some population, to give Carbon basically one house and a half a senator is my take. I am but one.
Thank you.
And I see Susan Simpson up there, too.
Yes, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. When the city of Laramie was dividing into wards, it had a computer program that had the population, and so the tech people could draw lines, and you could see the percentage, the population and the percentage deviation from the average. Trey is remembering this. Does the state have the same kind of setup so that the Corporations Committee can sit and work on it and move lines back and forth and see how it works, rather than adding it up manually?
Yes, there are a variety of pieces of software. The Legislative Service Office has one they're working with, and that's what Mr. Swank suggested. There's a public portal now available to that. There are also a couple of openly available, open-source, free products for redistricting that provide similar capabilities and are very easy to use. So if anybody wants to work and, you know, play this game at home, they're welcome to do that as well. So there are some very strong and functional tools that provide that capacity. Thank you.
Excellent. Could you send me those URLs, please?
I sure will.
URL is working on a website with some information.
Absolutely. We'll make sure those are distributed.
May I ask a question to Chairman Zwannitzer? So the question is, and so we're just talking about the public portal and the ability to, you know, upload the information and draw lines. What's the role of the public in relationship to individual-level maps with the regions and with the legislators in the region?
Sure. And so the public portal will be open for any member of the public to submit a plan at a statewide level or at a county level, or even perhaps a district level, if they should wish, and the Corporations Committee will review those. And depending, you know, if they look kind of agreeable to several members of the committee, we'll openly discuss those. So if you're a member of the public and you may not like the ultimate plan that Albany County is going with from your delegation, you certainly can design your own, ship it to your Corporations Committee, and we can put that up for debate as well. And so the option is available for any member of the public. I was trying to remember, Idaho did it and had like two hundred and thirty different maps submitted for their state, and like Oklahoma did it and had eight. So it's the MapTitude program that the legislature is using will be on our website later this week, and it's a free-to-public use. You'll get a code and can draw maps. There are five or six, as Senator Roth has said, other freeware apps, District Builder, Dave's, ESRI, if you get a, you know, a ninety-day free trial. So anybody can participate and say, hey, here's what I'm not only thinking for my county, but, you know, my parents or my friends live in some other county, or maybe they want to draw a completely different map of the regions. I think the majority of the committee is completely agreeable and willing to entertain all sorts of thoughts with this opening process. So our next meeting will be in Douglas on October sixth. Any kind of general, we're not asking for granular detailed plans, but kind of high-level plans that regions submit, but we'll take those into account with all other, anything submitted from the public. So super open process, encourage everyone to submit plans. We spent forty thousand dollars of taxpayer money to make it completely open, not only to Wyoming residents, but anywhere. And we hope to get some use and encouragement, and we can debate those and talk about their aspects as part of the greater plan.
I do have another question. I was unable to attend the entire Corporations Committee meeting last time around, but I know that Senator Case in particular has been promoting the idea of multi-district, multi-member districts, where we might have Albany County is one district which elects four representatives and two senators. And so it's kind of an at-large situation for Albany County. Is that idea still kicking around? Is that a viable option, or is that something that has been rejected by the Corporations Committee?
Super quickly, it's a totally viable option, and so what that means, especially in a county like Albany, if you just wanted four open House seats and two open Senate seats, and your plan says the Albany County boundaries will stay set, we would allow that at the discretion of your county to do that. There's some, you know, you get to Laramie County with ten House reps. It might be burdensome, but Senator Case is pushing that idea for different parts of the state. It might work very well. There's some academic literature on, you get more women, more minority representation, if you don't have head-on-head district elections. And so that would be part of the discussion for your delegation, your community, if you wanted to, yeah. Open seats, and right now it'd be four open House seats and two at-large in the county.
I would like to hear some conversation among the delegation and also the audience about what people think about that idea. I'm not sure what I think about it myself. I'm still open to it, but I don't know how it would work. But I'd love to hear some conversation about that, if anybody wants to.
So so this is going to first seem a little tangential, because we're talking about redistricting, but actually, it's intimately related. There's a lot of problems with single-member districts. You're always going to have some kind of minority across the state that is just going to receive no representation. Like, if you just have maybe five percent of the population, if they're spread out across the strait, you can't get them into a small district, and they'll never see any kind of representation. So the solution to that is multi-member districts, and not just districts that are multi-member, but districts where the members are selected with a proportional voting method. And so I guess my remark and question here is, has there been more discussion about proportional representation lately? And what kind of county-level control do we have over our voting methods used to select people proportionally? Are we able to choose something other than that plain old plurality voting? Is that a power we have, or has, or does the legislature need to define something around that?
So with regard to the flexibility right now for the counties, there really isn't any flexibility. Statute is written very firmly, and that's not a good thing necessarily. It would be great if there was some flexibility and you could allow counties to make some choices. We've had discussions about some of the possible choices, and I think that's what Chairman Zwannitzer was discussing, was the idea that Senator Case has of providing the opportunity and allowing for the choice to to counties or certain districts to do multi-member selection on proportionate representation. There really hasn't been a lot of discussion about that, because honestly, it's not very popular. That's the reality. We have a disproportionate representation right now, and majorities tend to like disproportionate representation when they're the majority. Hard to change that. It's hard to get people, as Chairman Zwannitzer mentioned a few minutes ago, people don't tend to vote against their own seat. And that's what you're requiring to get a proportionate representation.
Sort of a follow-up to that point, then, is what would it, yeah, the rest of my question, actually, which I forgot. What would it take to get proportional representation in Wyoming? What are the obstacles to get around? You know, would it have to be some kind of ballot initiative to make it happen? And if that's the case, does this tie in with the fact that we've had extremely unrealistic ballot signature requirements over the last thirty years now? What would it take to get proportional representation?
So I'm speculating a little bit. I think it's constitutional. I don't think there's any problem from a constitutional standpoint with proportionate representation, but I don't know that for sure, so that would take some investigation. And then, yes, if it is constitutional, a ballot initiative could get you there. And I don't see any barriers to that, other than the challenge that is our ballot initiative. So I would say, yes, that is achievable. I believe it's constitutional, based on my constitutional scholarly understanding. And and we do have a high bar, certainly, for ballot initiatives and the number of signatures, but it's possible, even though we know that it doesn't happen very frequently, because we have that very high bar. So that's my take on it, then.
I guess mine is that the answer I guess mine is that the answer is that it's political will. And in all honesty, it's only over the past five years where we've started to have even any conversations about changes in the election process, whether it be ranked choice voting or a runoff election. Those are all relatively recent. So that that's a sea change in and of itself. But it is all about political will. And then I want to go back to Ken, ask for comments. I'd say the biggest pushback to the notion of, and we'll just use us as an example, Albany County with four and two, is that right now, we are a citizen legislature. And that even though, and I must admit, I'm incredibly flattered when people who I know don't live in my district tell me that they vote for me, that they like me and they vote for me, but I know they they can't because of where they live. The reality is that it would be really expensive for all of a sudden representatives to have to run in the entire county when you were running in one particular district. And I think you're going to get that pushback all over the state from representatives. Because often, the way that it's being talked about is the two representatives that are nested within one senator, they would be elected at large. So kind of Chairman Case, that that's really his idea. You could expand it, but that's his idea. And I think you're going to get pushed back because of that.
The other option that conceivably exists, other than ballot initiative, to do something like what you're talking about is having a separate entity, other than the legislature, determine what the districts are and what that is going to look like, which then you don't have people invested in their own seats making those decisions. Maybe might be more viable option to an outside party, essentially.
Yeah. In fact, there's something we've been talking about in the League of Women Voters recently is there are actually some elegant mathematical algorithms that you can apply to districting to ensure that they're, in some sense, fair to all the parties and people involved. So you could consider that the ultimate outside party when it comes to districting fights. So the software that's being used does provide a lot of demographic detail and tries to allow for the possibility of reflecting some of the same concerns with community of interests. So that that's available. The one thing I'll say about the algorithmic and it would be, I think it would be beneficial if it were deep politicized, as Representative Prevenza just discussed. But regrettably, you know, who has to make that decision? The legislature. So the legislature has to take the decision-making process out of its own hands and opt for a third party. I think where you see that more often is when you have parity and contention in the parity circumstance, and you can get to the point where you can get to your majority. I regret, I don't anticipate anytime soon that we're going to have anything objective coming in and making these decisions, regrettably, because it's the nature of the process that it tends to continue itself. So, yeah, ballot initiatives, gator. And I see Representative Yen. So I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that Representative Yen has joined us from Jackson. He clearly drove all the way from Jackson to Laramie tonight, just to be with us here, so heavily engaged in this process. Thank you, Representative Yen.
And we're not giving you Rock River.
Are there any other questions or comments, either via the audience or from Zoom? Where do we go from here?
Well, I'd like to have an opportunity for folks to provide the feedback. We've discussed having effectively a comment period following this. This will be posted before discussion. And then I think we need to decide whether there are enough questions and enough interest or alternatives that are presented that we need to meet again and bring the community back together and present those, or whether there's enough comfort that we can start preparing something and we feel like we have enough information. So I think it depends on on the the public response and the public interest of of what our community wants and what our county wants from here for that decision. But I think it's perfectly reasonable for us to have one or two more get-togethers if the community wants that. There's there's no problem. There's no timeline requirements. I think I think we've we've got sufficient time to meet again, if necessary. We can get more maps out. We can have some tables. We could have a working session. I think there are a lot of possibilities of things that we can do if the community wants to. So, you know, anyone that's listening, let us know. We want to be sure that we're reflecting your interests, that we're hearing you, and that we're taking into consideration all of the interests of the community, the county, and and then balancing those with the state interests. So I think I think it depends on the feedback from here. Clerk Gonzalez, thank you.
Any other ideas or suggestions from any participant via Zoom? Is someone trying to make a comment, maybe is muted?
I have a question. This is Erin O'Darty. I was wondering if we could get a copy of the presentation. That'll be somewhere not easy to look up. Thank you. From Michael Swank.
I can, I sent it to the Albany County Clerk. I don't know if you wish to post it, or I believe we might be able to post it on our website as well.
Michael, we'd be happy to post it on the county's website and make it available to the public. If you also look on the county website, we do have maps. And basically, the maps are just areas of growth that are broken down. There are six different maps. And we took basically sections within Albany County to display. And you can see on the map, the lightly colored green on the map itself shows areas of growth within our community. We'd like to have any feedback or any questions that may arise with in seeing those maps displayed. You know, it was interesting, when we met, we talked. And I really had planned to do this. Many times, I think Representative Conley made notion that people say they voted for her when she, in fact, knew that they weren't in their district. We often wonder, too, how many people think they're within the city, but really are outside the boundaries of the city and live in the county. And we were going to prepare a map and allow the general public to baby basically put a pin, pardon me, put place a pushpin in where they believe they resided, to really see how many people really know whether they're in the city or in the county boundaries. And so we didn't do that tonight. But, you know, it was just interesting to hear that often, as candidates, you hear that people say, I voted for you, and you know that they weren't in your district to be voted on. So what I'd like to do is, Matthew, or pardon me, Michael, will you put something on the LSO website once the public can go in and retrieve and start with the map features that will allow them to work within and create possibly boundaries?
That will that will be on the portal. The process will basically be you have to initiate, you log in, make an account. And it brings you basically to what, asks you what type of plan you want to do, a House plan, a Senate plan. And then, once you choose how you want to do that, it'll give you the the basic program. And then you can, there's a little tutorial will show you what all the features do. And we will hopefully have that up this week. I'm in the process of trying to get more clarification right now. And I do believe, sorry, that we'll have a news release and also a potential communication from the co-chairs to the the body of the legislature.
Certainly, any data that we receive, we will also display on our website so that we can inform the public as much as we possibly can. We will do the same when we determine when the next work session will be. Hopefully, at that time, we can engage in having maps available and the tools necessary to basically look at at the map and see how we can draw some lines and meet within the 5% that allows and start working towards Albany County's plan. Are there any other questions or comments?
Jackie?
Yes.
Can you hear me? I'm a Zoom person?
Yes.
Okay. This is Judy Snook. I am very much interested in having another one of these meetings, because I have learned a great deal tonight. And this is all new territory for me. So I would like to have something more, if it's possible.
When we arrange for another work session, I certainly will place a news item in the newspaper, as well as use as much media that's available. We'll put it on the county website. And you're always welcome to call the county clerk's office to get any updates if there's any interest there. We want as much community involvement. There are a lot of stakeholders. We appreciate the League of Women Voters' participation, City Council, the general public. LSO, Michael, thank you for taking time out of your busy day to be with us this evening. Our representatives who have traveled, Senator Zwannitzer, our Albany County delegation, and you, the public. This is our plan that we want to work together and implement for the people that we represent and serve. Any closing remarks or comments from anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, County Clerk Gonzalez and staff, for organizing this. And I just, you mentioned it, but I think we have every county commissioner, all the city council. We have members of the school board here. We really appreciate your attendance and your concern and your participation.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening. Please feel free to, I'm sure that our representatives are willing to to listen to any personal comment that you'd like to make. Otherwise, we will keep you posted. Please stay engaged. We want your involvement. Thank you.